Council meeting to order. Councilmember Brandon Guthrie, Guthie from District Six will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Good value your head. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for allowing us to gather here today. I hope that you will guide us, make sound, solid decisions for the betterment of York County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the following individuals would come forward for the oath of office. Georgia Furr, Catawba Mental Health Board, Rob Cooper, Border Disabilities and Special Needs, and Reese Hagner for the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board. And as you make your way forward, I want to say thank you on behalf of the entire council. We appreciate your service. Without you, we couldn't get much of the county business done. You are essential. We appreciate you being here. Typically, we shake hands. At this time, since we're still under COVID restrictions, we can't even do that, but we do want to thank you collectively for what you do.
Thanks for coming down to the county of York County as well. Thank you for your service to our important missions. Please raise your right hand. Good afternoon. And we solemnly square. And I'm duly qualified for in the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office, which I've been appointed. And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States.
We have no appearances. We now move to the public forum session. We have some individuals who have signed up. If you are here on a matter that has a public hearing associated with it, I do want to let you know that you have unlimited time at the time that we speak on the public hearing. For this public appearance, you have two minutes. And when you come up to the podium, if you'll please state your name and give your address and make sure, because I hate cutting people off, if you'll just make sure to pay attention to when your two minutes is up, I would appreciate that. First up is Donald Jenkins.
Yes, Donald Jenkins, 6771 Oak Ridge Road, Clover, South Carolina. Andy Woods was supposed to meet me here. We especially on the agenda for approval of a development on Oak Ridge Road, Sharon Blake. Has there been some changes that were not on the agenda?
David, are you aware of anything? The only public hearing we have relates to the 164-acre parcel in Ms. Love's district, 2499 Vista Road.
No, that wouldn't be the project, but I know the last conversation I had with Joel Woods' office and Andy to be here tonight at 6:00.
Okay. If you, are you familiar with that?
It doesn't, doesn't sound familiar. It may have been the planning commission meeting they referenced, but...
If you have some comments that you'd like to make, we'll be happy to let you have your two minutes. Or you can check with our clerk to see if there's a miscommunication about scheduling.
Yeah, and who may be the first.
Right here. She's raising her hand.
No, I'll do it.
Yes, sir. Next up is Nancy Deleon.
My name is Nancy Deleon. I am part owner of the 2080 Camus Road, which is adjacent to the 164-acre development that you're planning on Allison Creek Landing Vista Road. So that property's been in my family for a while, originally owned by my father, then now my son is primary resident. He's next to speak. So our concern is currently the Camus Road is, was Duke Power property or is Duke Power property, and we had access through easements that was conveyed by the grantor to the grantee based on a private resident being on that cove. So my biggest concern is, I am thrilled that there's going to be more of a public access and more recreation. I'm concerned that there's public encouragement to come basically down a road that ends at a residence. So I want to come on record on that issue because Camus Road really isn't a road, it's a private residence or a driveway into our residence. So I'm interested in, in ways to protect the, you know, the safety of, of the actual private residence and, you know, however we can, I don't want hikers and campers and, you know, people basically wandering onto that piece of property that is going to be adjacent to that park. So, so whether that's, I don't know if Duke is conveying that property to you or it is still Duke's property or if the easement is still valid or if it's something we can acquire up to the road so that we can improve the driveway and potentially gate it off since it will be a public, public access.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is about 164.
Yes, the public hearing.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We listen to, to any comments that you have.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Michael Gomez.
Hi, my name's Mike Gomez. I'm the owner of 2080 Camus Drive property. I'm not sure how these all work. Am I supposed to talk later after you plan or now?
If you talk now, you get two minutes. You can actually talk again and have unlimited time, but just for purposes of keeping your thoughts together, whichever one you want to do.
Okay. I just wanted to springboard off of what my mother said. My concern is the, is there going to be any security onsite? Is there 24-hour staff to watch the campers? My property backs up exactly where the primitive campsites will be, so they can walk right across that edge of that cove, right on my property. I am a single parent to a six-year-old girl that I am concerned. A bunch of random high schoolers will be drinking on the cove. Happens every night, even now. So my main concern is the security of the property itself, keep it as peaceful as it is now. I'm more than happy to have a park and for everybody to enjoy the wildlife. I'd much rather that be there than houses, but I still want to secure my property itself.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Ronald King.
He's still back there?
Ronald King. Sam McGregor.
I'll speak in the public.
Okay. Emily Blackwell.
I'll speak in the public.
Okay. That concludes our public hearing. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Move to public hearing. Rezoning action. Hold public hearing and consider second reading, case number 21-01, tax map numbers 5500000114 115 and 043. Zoning request to rezon from RD2 to AGC, 164.22 acres, Ms. Love's district at 2049 Vista Road. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? If you'll come forward.
Can y'all hear me through the mask?
Might want to speak up just a little bit.
Okay. I'll just take off. My name's Emily Blackwell. I'm located at 619 Raphael Place, Charlotte, North Carolina. I am here on behalf of the petitioner. I work for Stewart, and we have been hired by Duke Energy and have partnered with York County for this rezoning. I just wanted to, what y'all know is here, if any questions come up and folks that live on Camus, I would love to get your info and probably talk outside of this meeting, and I think I can quell your questions, actually. So in there, I will speak to one of your comments, which is regarding security. There is going to be a guard gate with, with actual, like, traffic arms, and so the, the park will be closed unless you have registered to, to camp overnight. The park will be closed to visitors after, after dark. Additionally, just looking at the map while I go while you're speaking, I make sure which street you guys are talking about. The camping is almost on the other side from where you guys are. So doesn't, there's some picnic spots closer on your end, but not any camping sites. So I think I just wanted to address those. Is there anything else that's on anybody's mind before, that you wanted me to address that I might be able to help with?
Typically, at the public hearings, we just listen to those who are in support or against. But I appreciate you reaching out to the folks who've already done that.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
I live at 1901 Voyager Road, which is off of Allison Creek Road, and I've been in the county now for about 40 years, and I've been on Allison Creek Road for about 13 years. Do have just a couple of pictures here to try to show a little more detail of what we're talking about. First of all, I am for the project. I think it's going to be real good for the county. This will be, this is only about one public boat access area on this side of the lake. Next closest one is north at Buster Boy Bridge and then south towards Ebenezer Park. So it will definitely be a big plus for the county and for the people in the area. Also, one thing that our homeowner association does is we track the number of sheriff calls that come down to the, to up, to the peninsula. And approximately, historically, around 40 to 50% of the sheriff calls goes to this Vista Road. So hopefully, by having controlled access and a ranger there, this would reduce some of the calls we have there. This picture right here that I have is just a, let's see if, let's see if I can get this put in here. There we go. Right here is the existing, you see the green dot? That's where the existing boat landing is, and that's the area that we're talking about expanding. They're going to expand it all the way around in here. And you see a lot of, you see a lot of open area. Right now, there's about 500 houses that's on this, on the peninsula right now. And this is the road, the only road out right here. We're tied into 274. And then the access for the park right now comes right here and goes out here. So here again, I'm for the project. I think it'll be good for the county. Only concern is, that I want to bring up is, of course, is traffic. And y'all have probably heard, a lot of people talk about traffic, and me too here in the past. Let's see. Okay, this next slide now is showing the development that's coming into the area. This is from the planning department, April of 2019. Right here again, this is where the park's at, this is the peninsula. This is Lakeside Glen, which is in the works. It's going to be an additional 425 houses, so it's going about double the population on the peninsula there. Over here is Westport. It has about 800 houses that's come, residences will be coming there, and it's kind of in the works also. Now, the things that are not on this planning map are the peninsula at Lake Wiley, which is right this in here, past the nuclear plant. It's going to have 150 houses only. Also, this whole area right here is, is the Dalmer Plan Development, and it could potentially have, not knowing that the small area plan could do to it, but it's, could potentially have 3,000 additional residences there. And on top of that, Clover School District is also proposing to build a high school right here. So you're going to see there's going to be a big concentration of, you know, not tomorrow, but in the next 10 years, that area is really going to change. So here again, traffic is, is one of my, is one of my main concerns. Okay, here again, it just is showing the Lakeside Glen. Right here is where the park will tie in and go with this intersection. And that intersection is the most concerning. It's a difficult one. For a part of this project here, an extensive traffic study, TIA, was done, and they determined that the, right now, the loss of service for Allison Creek Road in the afternoons there is a D, is rated a D right now. And due to that, and due to the line of sight, you can see how this curves, the Allison Creek Road curves. It's very difficult to see in and out of there. So it was determined before this, this development gets started, a traffic signal has to get put in, has to be installed. So assuming that that traffic, that that development proceeds on and we get a traffic signal, then that will take care of a lot of the problems that we have. Okay, a traffic study was done also for this development, right, for the, not development, for the park expansion. It was a Tier One, which is not really very extensive. They just basically looked at to see how much more traffic is it going to add to the area. And according to them, they were saying it looked like it only would be about more, 14 more vehicles during the peak evening hours, which really isn't much of anything. But my opinion, it was probably be more than that, because it's really going to be a lot nice area, it's going to draw more people than just the boat ramp right now. So, and on top of that, it's going to be trailer, boats pulling trailers, and I mean, cars pulling trailers, and also RVs and longer vehicles, things like that, which is going to make it more challenging at this intersection, which comes back to the need to be sure that we get a traffic signal. Other item right here, this is just another one. This is the new development. This is Allison. This is the peninsula. This is existing. Right here's the park. This is the AZ Road area of nuclear plant. That means it's within a mile. So another concern has always been of people is, you know, being able to safely evacuate should the need arise. And of course, this is the only way for us to get out, is that one intersection right This is a picture of the intersection. This is 274. This is Allison Creek Road. Right here is the church, Allison Creek Presbyterian Church. And this is, there's only one lane coming in and one lane coming out. And like I said, it's very challenging right now. They are proposing, or we have to have a traffic signal put in before this new development starts. And even with the new, with the traffic signal and the build-out in seven years without these other three items that I've noted about the Dalmer and the school, it will still be a D, a loss of service of D for Allison Creek Road, even with the traffic signal. And that doesn't include the additional traffic coming from the, from the boat, the boat landing expansion. So one other, this is an item that I'm proposing that'll be done in the future, and this is Concord, Concord Road, this is where the nuclear plant is. And this is where it ties into 274, it's just a mile up the road, two miles up the road. They have one lane in and they have two lanes out and a, and a signal. So down the road, we need to look at adding additional, have two lanes coming out of Allison Creek Road so that we can, a lot of, most of the traffic turns right anyway. So that would be a big benefit to have two lanes coming out, would help us on our loss of service. Okay, this is the other thing. This is actual picture of the, of the development. And you were talking about here with the RVs, and I think what you were talking about was down over in here is where this property was. But I think you need to look into the future of making another access to the park. For two reasons, for the park, and then also to give the people of the community a separate acts, a separate way to, to get out of the area if necessary. Not, not talking about doing it right now, but into your plans, make it into your plans right now, the future road from here over to right here to Campbell Road. And it's not a real far distance, but it would be a big benefit to the area. So in summary, I'm for the project. I think it's real good. We need to be sure that we get the signal that comes with Lakeside Glen. If we, that project doesn't go on and we don't get the signal, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of challenging. The second thing is that we need to look down the road, we're having a second lane, right turn lane. And then the third thing is try to plan now for future access coming off of 274 at the Campbell Road, Will Harrier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagner. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Hey, Sam McGregor, pastor at Allison Creek Presbyterian Church, right next door to the development. We've been working with, with representatives from Duke and others and tying in their, the trail system into Allison Creek Presbyterian's trail, trail system. So there are a couple of things I wanted to dovetail with Mr. Hagner, and that is the importance of the traffic signal out there on that intersection, because it is a very dangerous intersection as it is right now. Our church has a preschool with 100 children in it come this fall. And so just imagine the input, the influence of the RVs coming out at, with the, with the preschool situation as well. It's my understanding that the development that is potentially going down Allison Creek Road, as part of that development, a new, the traffic light is supposed to be a part of that, but it sounds like this is very possible that the park could precede the, the development there. So I want to make sure that, that, that is a part of the conversation in moving forward, that the, the light goes in with the potential park opening up. And then the other thing, it's my understanding that, that the county will be the one who will be responsible for the security, assuming that the, the park is, is approved and all that, transition on the property is, is made. And so I want to just reemphasize how important that security is, to invest in that so that it is a safe area for neighbors as well as folks who are going to be traversing back and forth between the park and the church. So thank you, and thank you all for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Anyone else here wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against?
I'm closed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion? Motion and a second to approve any discussion?
Yes, I just want to clarify for everyone that what we are actually voting on tonight is the rezoning of this property. This is already an existing park, and we are simply voting to zone it as a park. So we, we have not gotten to the point of discussing the plan and what that looks like, what that entails yet.
Mr. Roddy.
I just want to make a comment. It was good to see some of the neighbors come out and voice their concern and immediately hear the representatives say, hey, you know, kind of clear up some of what may have been a misconception or certainly clarify, you know, some of what their intentions are. And it's real admirable that you said willingly that you're going to reach out to them and y'all kind of get together and, and work through whatever their concerns are. So it's good that you came tonight, and it's good that, that the neighbors came as well.
Yeah, just like, yeah, I'd like to second that, too. I do agree with that. Thank you for this feedback. Quick question. Do we know where we are with this light request at this corner? Any, do we have any details on?
I see Patrick's here. We can see if he has any information on that. He was, he was here earlier. I'm not, I promise you, I saw him sitting there a minute ago. I, I don't know. We'll have to check on that.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County zoning code, section 155.347, temporary prohibition of new development within the Lake Wiley zoning overlay district to remove expiring prohibitions on applications for rezoning and lot development requirements, to extend the temporary prohibition on apartments, condominiums, and townhome dwellings, to extend the section's expiration date, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move close. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have another motion? Motion passes. Do we have another motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, again, I just want to clarify exactly what we're doing here. We've had a moratorium in place for about the past 18 months for the small area of Lake Wiley, and a part of that was to, the prohibition on apartments, condominiums, and townhomes, multifamily. We are simply extending that part of it. There were two other things. There was, you couldn't do a rezoning and something else. I don't remember exactly what the other thing was. I don't want to word, I know what it is, but I don't want to word it wrong. But, um, so we are simply extending the prohibition on the multifamily aspect of that moratorium.
Any other discussion? Mr. Roddy.
I was going to ask, was it, are we extending it six months, nine months? What's kind of the timeframe we're going to be?
We are extending it until the recoding, until, until counsel hears the recoding presentation from, from staff.
Yeah, I think the date's through the end of the year, the actual date.
Any other discussion? Mr. Winkler.
When this came before us, as, when we were setting the agenda and stuff, I had some concerns about it. And still have a little bit of a concern. I don't, I don't like perpetually prohibiting somebody to use their land, but I understand the reasoning. We, we started out with a much larger list of things we were working on fixing, and we've kind of corrected everything except for this with the recode. And county attorney and management's assured me that, that, you know, we're good with this, and there's, there's reasoning for it. And with the, the major rework, and we're doing it on the recode project, I am reluctantly supporting it this evening, but I did have some concerns about it, so.
Any other discussion?
I, I support this. I am interested in seeing that we get the BD3 and the RD2 revisions done quickly so that we can be done with the moratorium, but I support this tonight.
All those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move to new business. Counsel to approve the replacement of Moss Justice Center's guide radio tower and to authorize the purchase, installation, and maintenance of the new tower by South Carolina State Contract Awarded vendor Motorola Solutions, Inc., for a total cost of $1,208,567.22.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to approve award of bid 2729 regarding the Stopbridge Regional Wastewater Pump Station and Forest Main Project to the lowest responsive and responsible vendor, State Utility Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $2,494,220.30, which includes a 10% contingency.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. This time, we have committee and other reports, finance and operations, Mr. Robert Winkler.
Thank you. Finance and operations met this evening at 5:30, which reminds me, I looked up at the clock a while ago, and Karen, we need you to get the ladder and change that for us. But, uh, councilmember Allison Love and Joel Hamilton and myself were there, and we looked at several different positions, and the motion was, we made the motion and approved recommendation of Michael Drummond for a reappointment. of Michael Drummond for a reappointment on the York County Natural Gas Board. And there is a new position or new seat that has come open on that board that we're also going to be noticing and looking at with that. For York County Forever, we recommended Nicole Druckmiller for a second term and Creighton Hayes for a second term. On York, keep York County beautiful, we recommended Stephen Ballinger to fill an unexpired term, Ashley Platts for an unexpired term, Marie McFadden for a second term, Elizabeth Buech for a first term, Marion Ray for a first term and Marilyn Hakim for a second term. In the Old English District Commission, we recommended the appointment of Billy Dunlap with a contingency, I guess, where we've asked the county attorney to look at whether or not that's an ex officio or what that position is. And so that's, it's motion to approve pending that information coming back to us. Zoning Board of Appeals, we recommend Barbara Candler for a second term, Tony Smith for a first term and Derek Williams for a second term. Lake Wiley Parks and Rec, the recommendation is for Ron Dumret for a second term. Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, for recommendation or approval is for Copper Thatch for a first term in District One and for Matt Burrell for a first term in the at-large seat. Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, approved Lisa Airwood to fill an unexpired term and Benjamin Bolding for a first term. And lastly, in the Bethel Tax Fire, or Bethel Fire Tax District Board, I'll get it right in a second, recommended for the reappointment of Joe Costello for a second term. And then after that, we got a short update from our finance people on the, just a finance update on how we're doing with income and that type of thing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. Any council member, new non-agenda comments?
Guess who's back?
Saw your hand hurt, Mr. Winkler.
I'll, I want to make a, a comment and a shout out to somebody here in District Three and in, in the city of York. In today's society, we hear a whole lot about things that, you know, people with not being able to get along and, and angry comments and, and all the, the negative that's going on in the world. And so I want to give a shout out to a, a police officer on York City Police Department named Pierre King and a project that he has started, this is his shirt and his organization, be the king of change, obviously King is his last name, blue line because he's law enforcement and you can see the hands at the bottom, they're multirace. And he is really pushing and working toward, you know, there, there's so much negative in the world and so much going on back and forth about race and everything else. And there's an old saying that I'm sure we've all heard that, you know, to be the change that you won't see in the world. And that's what he's pushing is to try to, you know, just to get people to open up more, think about that and treat everybody, no matter what nationality or, or race or anything else you are with respect. And just realize we're all in this together, we're all human. And, and so I support him and I just wanted to give him a shout out this evening because he's working on doing something good and, and we don't hear enough about the stuff good that's going on in the, in the community and the world now, so.
Very good.
So I want to mention one other thing, thank you, Robert, that was great. And the RFATS Committee, you know, on our last meeting that we had, we did quite a bit of review. One of those things was around the traffic around Lake Wiley that I got stuck in on the way here. But anyways, there is some activity around that, new lights, et cetera, that, you know, we're looking for the future. The other thing too, I just want to mention that I'll actually be serving on the subcommittee for TAPS and, and for CNM funding, so I just want to share that with y'all too.
Mr. Roddy.
I'm back. I just wanted to say, I know Dr. King had showed up, not the King that Robert was mentioning, but he was, he showed up tonight, him and a couple of people had gotten together, they contacted me over the weekend. And we're doing such a wonderful job of vaccinating so many people out at the Galleria, thanks to Piedmont, thanks to our staff and volunteers and certainly the staff people at the City of Rock Hill who are contributing some of their staff time to help vaccinate people. And I think last week they reached 20,000 people being vaccinated. And so what they talked about this weekend, myself, Dr. King and, and another young lady, was what, how do we institute the next step to go after some of the homeless populations, some of the people who, who don't have IDs, who may cross barriers of trying to get a vaccine, who don't have a permanent address, don't have an ID. One of the things that I was made aware of that some of the homeless people, if they're going out to the Galleria, it seems like they're loitering and the police gets called on them. So we're trying to work with Manning Cameron and the Pathways Groups to try to set up something over at Pathways because the city buses in Rock Hill makes a loop around the city of Rock Hill and that's one avenue that they, some of the, let's say the homeless or less fortunate, they can get a ride to the Pathways location, but we just have to go through and set up something at Pathways and, and see if we can start to alleviate some of these barriers that some people may be coming across when it comes to getting vaccinated because obviously they won't have access to the internet. Obviously some of them don't have IDs or certain things that are required to get the vaccine because it's going to come a point that they're going to be left out if we don't start trying to find ways to alleviate some of the obstacles that every one of us up here kind of takes for granted that we have in place that allows us to get access or freedom to have access to certain things. So I just wanted to kind of put that out. I know he probably regrets he didn't hang around and mention it, but that was kind of what he was coming for. Just put it in the atmosphere, what can we do as a county if we can do the same thing at the Galleria? Maybe bring it a little more on the south side to address some of the critical needs and some of the people who are not as fortunate to be able to go online and, and take care of some of the registration. And he did mention that not one of the homeless people that he serves, and he's all over York County, not one had reported to him that they had COVID. So he's doing outstanding job of obviously taking care of a lot of the unseen things that when we go to sleep, he's out working in the middle of the night trying to make sure he brings some kind of peace and comfort to some of the underserved and, and homeless people in, in York County. So that's what he was here for.
I was hoping he was going to actually speak to us tonight.
Yeah, so that kind of piggybacks off the discussion we've had in the past in regards to Pathways and the opportunity that possibly we may be able to help them as far as transportation goes, whether it's a vehicle, for example, out of our fleet that we're not using. But again, that does piggyback off our conversation, so good, very good.
I just want to say thanks to South Carolina Highway Patrol and York County Sheriff's Office for blitzing Lake Wiley over the last few days. There have been cars pulled over, blue lights everywhere and it's awesome. It's been very needed and very much requested, so we appreciate that. And if I can just get everybody now to stop reporting where they are to the people on the traffic page, will be even, be even more people pulled over. But there's a lesson, we've got a serious issue, as y'all know on RFATS Committee too, we've got a serious issue with traffic and accidents and the increasing numbers of those. The other thing is that we are, a little trash talk for you, we are, I've put together nine teams that we're still taking volunteers for to clean up our roads. So this Saturday morning from 8:30 till noon, we will be, we will be on, on those streets, on those dangerous roads. And hopefully the fire, the fire department and the police department, they'll all be out there helping us. But, um, so we are going to do a, a big litter pickup and finish up with a pizza party sponsored by me following that at Field Day Park. And the other thing is that because we did that, the Oak Ridge Middle School soccer teams with about 40 students have requested that they be able to do a litter pickup. So they're going to be doing one on March the 24th, that's a Wednesday afternoon, they're going to spend about an hour and a half or two hours out with parents cleaning up three roads that we weren't able to get to that are closest to their school.
Good deal, love to hear that. Anyone else?
I do want to let the council know that I had the privilege of going, Ryan Sanderson with Knowledge Perk organized a group to go to city of Greenville and take a look at a program that they have, it's called Next and Next Accelerate. Got to see the facilities there. I think it's an intriguing idea, I know that this council at our strategic plan talked about how are there ways that we can invest in our local small businesses, the ones that actually stay here, we get them, the entrepreneurs early, we, we learn how to support them. We, we do, you know, incentives for the larger companies, but I still think there's more that we could do for the smaller ones. And this one is, has some really neat ideas that I, I would love to see council at least, maybe not exactly what we want to do, but some things that we can do to tweak that, ways to invest in our small businesses in a meaningful way that can help them and maybe do that through some of our local, through our existing product development fund and start truly putting, they say, you know, what you care about, take a look at the checkbook. And I think, you know, there's already funding that's there that comes from the Philos. I think we ought to explore ways to, to use that a little bit more creatively with our smaller businesses, but it's, I encourage you to go take a look at it, they've got a really good program, they've been working on it for years now, but you got to start somewhere.
At this time, do we have, we have no citizen concerns? Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do, we have three. Moved, we go into executive session. One, for the receipt of legal advice regarding the Mereway Point mediated settlement agreement. Two, for the receipt of legal advice regarding the condemnation of Penny's project number 11149-014, which is SCRT 72, road widening tracks 56 and 57. And then also regarding another contractual matter, CHM McKelvey Center lease agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will move right into executive session. We are out of executive session, no action was taken, do we have any motions?
We do. First motion is that we approve the CHM McKelvey Center lease agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
Our second motion is to approve the Mereway Point mediated settlement agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes, we'll have a little discussion. I'm not going to support this tonight and, and the reason for that is, I think because I've sat in this seat for four years to, to keep this, this type of thing from happening. This is something that, that happened before I came on council, it's a development that was approved, a, a plan that was approved as a rezoning prior to my being on council. And I think the best developers are those who are willing to do the right thing. And in this case, I feel like there's still too many homes here, it's still a, an impact, it's going to be a burden on the community. And as the person who represents the, the people of the community, I'm just, I'm just opposed to it. I've been opposed to it from the start and I know it's been through the planning commission, it's, it's been through mediation and, you know, it could continue on to, to another, another court battle. And I just, I think what's important for, for me tonight is to walk out of here knowing that, you know what, I still don't support it. I don't support it, I'm not ever going to support it, it was a rezoning, it's impacting our Clover School District, the children in this community will go to Oak Ridge Middle School, which is basically full. And, and we are all going to be facing $198 million bond referendum to, to build new schools, but we're packing in, you know, 300 more homes. People are sitting in traffic, we can't get home at night, we can't go out to dinner because it takes an hour to get to dinner. If you, if you pull out and take a, try to take a, a left on, on 49, it's, it's impossible. I just, I, I've looked for every way possible to not allow this to, to happen and I just can't find the right solution in this case. The good news is in the past four years, we've not approved any, any other rezonings. So that's the only good news I have on this. And, and so I'm not going to support it and we'll just see where we end up with it in a few months.
I just want to piggyback on that a little bit. I don't blame Councilwoman Love for her vote because it is difficult. I don't think there's anyone on this council, if faced with the opportunity to hear the rezoning, that would approve it given what we know about it at this point, based on the current legal posture of this plan and, and how it came to, to us, it appears that this is the best option, but unfortunately this is what it is.
Yeah, I, I have major concerns in regards to the impact of the community, to the schools, to the roads. I've personally seen, again, the traffic that it's affected out there, so I have, I do have some major concerns.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes four to three. Any other motions?
The third motion is to approve the condemnation of Penny's project. Number 11149-014, it's SCRT 72, road widening tracks 56 and 57.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.